Uh, right now. All right, I'd like to call a public meeting to order. Please stand for the same with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands in. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, uh, I'll turn to Lovanic at this point.
Great, thank you. We have a presentation this evening, um, from Nate Bolt from Turner. And from Brad Valencourt from Troutman, um, they have been working with us, um, on this capital project. And, um, we're now looking at phase two and they're gonna talk to you a little bit about the bids and the bid recommendations. Thanks, guys. Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. You hear me okay?
Yep, yeah, perfect.
All right, so on November 12th, uh, we received all the bids for phase two of your capital projects. We advertised 10 total prime contract packages. And we received 42 total bids for the whole project, which was quite a good turnout for all the packages. Uh, we had nine for the site work, seven for the general trades. 10 or that's a 10, 13 total for the mechanicals, five for the plumbing, four for electrical. And then four for the roofing as well. Um, so it was a fantastic turnout, a lot of good, um, bidding. There was some incredibly tight numbers across all the packages, which was great. The nice part for Niagara Wheatfield, uh, over the last, last couple of days, we finished de-scoping. And sitting with all the lowest responsible bidders, making sure they were good with their bids. And at the end of the day, your project right now is just a touch over $3 million under the total bond referendum. So we actually came in completely under budget under base two, which was absolutely fantastic. The total contract award and alternates, which is part of your, um, forward packet was 15,104,000. So it was a fantastic turnout, particularly on the site work and roofing numbers. Uh, there was some good competition. They really came in much further under the estimate than we had thought. So at the end of the day, we were projecting your $30 million bond. We have the 8.1 million dollars that we are projecting for the phase one final costs. And then with your construction contingency and your soft cost, we came in at 18.89. So again, it was, it's $3 million still under your bond rap, which is fantastic news for Niagara Wheatfield. So definitely open, leaves the door open for some future work, uh, with the funding that you already have approved. So. Brad, not sure if you want to add anything ridiculous to that.
Yeah, during the, the process, we've kind of veed out probably a million dollars worth of work. That's probably what we're looking to bring back initially. And potentially just create a, a phase three package, admitted to SCD and proceed with that. And we'd be working with Dan Allison and Greg and even the facilities committee, if they want to get involved on that scope. Um, the other item I wanted to touch base on Nate can probably, uh, put more input on this, but the PLA. Um, when you look at all the contractors that bid and awarded contractors. We're making a recommendation for six contracts. Five of those six are actually union contractors that were low bidders on the project. Um, so any of the cost and the timing and delay that would have happened for going for that PLA. You can see that we already have union contractors that bid on the project and were, are going to be awarded those projects. So the savings, you're almost got double the savings by keeping pace with what you guys originally had.
Just one thing based. Um, I think what I'd recommend for the capital project committee is that once, um, we pull back those items that were initially in the scope that we had cut out, that we would then bring the capital project committee back together to say, okay, what other items besides that could we add that tie into the scope of our work? And it will certainly count on you to give us some, some recommendations with Greg, um, on that. But so somebody understands if it was about $3 million, I think it was actually about 1.2 million dollars of work that we pulled out of the scope.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, this, you know, it being so much below, now we can even add back in beyond that, some of the other things that we know would need done. But we will do that through, I think, capital project committee, and then we can make recommendations, you know, to the board, just to go forward with, you know, whatever additional work we add back in.
Just, Dan, were those projects pulled on in phase one or phase two?
Phase, phase two. Um, yeah, and, and in addition to, to kind of touching that a little too, Dan. Uh, we have a master list going of items, even in your 2016 project, that weren't able to quite make the cut. So we have a whole list of a lot of those items that we could absolutely sit and go through and prioritize to try and get some more work back in.
Yeah, and I think to, to Rick's question, if, correct me if I'm wrong. But because of what the bids came in on phase one compared to the estimates, it's why in phase two, we had to back work out. Now, because phase two came in lower, we can put the work back in that we had for phase two initially, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
And so the difference is what, about almost 2 million then? Are we talking extra?
Three, yeah.
Three, right?
Yeah, 3 million right now. So when you, you know.
1.2, so we're talking about, okay, 1.8.
Yes, yes. Yeah, so it's, uh, it was good. It was, you know, I, I, I think Brad can attest to this too, you know. Niagara Wheatfield was definitely one of the early projects to go out to bid for the season kind of post-COVID hitting back in the spring. So, uh, I don't think any of us anticipated the level of savings and competition that was going to come out from that because of the market. So it was a great, great benefit to, to you as a district. Um, but I mean, I, even myself, I know, you know, and, uh, some of us sitting in that room opening the bids. You know, across, you know, take your site work contract, for example, your, your top four bidders on a 2.2 million dollar bid estimate were less than 100,000 apart. Um, the GCs were almost $9,000 between the first and second place on a 1.6 million dollar bid. I mean, that's, that's incredibly tight, so.
Yeah, it's good. All right, um, any other questions then on the, uh, the bids for Turner? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
You too. Take care.
Thank you.
All right, I have to call for a motion to consent, to accept the consensus agenda items as submitted. The acceptance of the previous minutes to prove the IPs as listed, to approve the fundraisers as listed. Accept the donation and to accept the bids on the phase two construction project.
I'll make a motion.
Any other for the discussion of those items? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion standing, motion carries. I have personnel items, I have to call for motions to accept the personnel report as submitted.
Motion.
Seconded. Any discussion, any of the items on there? All right, all those, and, oh, I, yeah, I do have just one quick question, because I see that we're adding another building base sub. How, how are we, um, how are building base subs working out this year with us putting those in? Been, has it been beneficial?
Sure, um, with the appointments this evening, we'll be up to eight building base subs that are currently working in that capacity. Some of the early building base subs that we hired this year are already filling in in, uh, more long-term roles in a substitute capacity. Um, they are used every single day and they are used, uh, with very little wiggle room in their schedule. Meaning they are filling in sometimes six, seven classes per day at the secondary level. And at the elementary level, they're filling in in multiple classrooms, multiple areas. So it's been a huge asset. I want to thank the board for supporting it because, uh, it, it's been tremendous in helping us run our schools.
What do you think, uh, Dan, between Dan and Tom of, once we're out of the pandemic, are we going to continue with the, the model for the building base subs, you think? Or go back to just the per diem that are at will and, you know, usually just selecting days?
Yeah, I think we want to talk about it. We want to analyze like the, 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 the cost, the data. Um, you know, one of the things that certainly has made it, ma- made it, I think. The, the reason for us to make this change was because we knew during COVID, it was going to be a little bit more difficult to get subs, right? Whereas during a normal year, we have certain people who sub almost every day all year. So if, if I felt like the building based subs would be different from the people who are there all the time, I'd want to jump all over it. So let us analyze a little bit, but it's, it's a good question.
Okay. If there's no other questions, then all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion standing, motion carries. All right, uh, capital project committee, uh, we heard the presentation tonight, um, by Turner. Uh, anything else, uh, Bobby, you want to add?
No, we're just, that we're going to be planning on having a meeting to discuss, um, the additional funding that we're going to be able to use, utilize. Uh, going forward because of the bids that we got in, they were lower than expected.
Okay.
Can I just jump in and say something? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Uh, uh, I, we may have mentioned this so, uh, a few meetings ago, but I just want to add in because I was doing some reporting for New York State today. Uh, phase one, and I just wanted to let the board know that I worked with, um, Tim's, uh, Rick Timms. And we came up with some, um, additional funding for this project in the, in the amount of about, I can't remember off the top of my head. But I want to say around $319,000 in Native American aid toward that project. So that's in addition to, um, you know, state aid that we'd be getting. So that was a, that was a good thing.
Oh, that's good.
So it offset some of the reserves that we were using in phase one. So we were able to save some of that money back in reserves, which is good. Actually, I take it back, not back in reserves. It's going to be, it's going to be, um, coded as a revenue source to that. So we will have to use, we can use less reserves is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Than anticipated. So I just want to let the board know that.
Allison, how's Mr. Tim's doing?
He's doing good. He's act- actually, I'm very happy with them. They have been very good with, um, the customer service and, and very helpful on a lot of things, much more so than, um, what I've experienced in the past with some of our other vendors. So I'm very happy with their, with their service.
Good. Would you, Steve, wouldn't we bring him in seven, eight years ago or so?
Uh, first year Lynn was here. Uh, actually, it was, uh, it was before that. It was, uh, when Mr. Knowles, um, was here. Uh, Allison, just so that, because John and Mike may not know, John may know, but Mike probably doesn't. Do you want to explain what, or Dan, if you want to explain what, who Rick Timms is?
Rick Timms is our financial consultant. We use him, um, when we bond the capital projects. Um, we use him to help, uh, forecast our five-year outlook. Um, I've used him for different aid things, uh, assistance on state aid for capital project work and things like that.
Very good. And, and you, obviously, uh, if you follow some of the, um, the messages from NISBA periodically, he has some pieces in there also talking about the, the. Uh, he is, Allison, correct me if I'm wrong, he was one of the leads in the lawsuit with the small school districts against the state about proper funding.
Yes, yeah.
So, um, you know, he is still carrying that on because according to the, the, him winning the lawsuit. His organization on the lawsuit was supposed to be properly funded and still are not, of course. So, all right, um, policy committee, uh, Julie.
Well, I was hoping you would want to read those policies.
Julie, so I'll talk a little bit about them. I mean, uh, what, what, any major upch- updates and changes on here? Are these just, just revisions to bring more courage?
Yeah, I would just say that there's not, there's nothing too significant. If you notice, two of the policies have to do with, um, privacy data. And, and that, that's a, it's 5676, that one in particular. And really, um, they've, because the part 2D language exists somewhere else, they've taken out of this, this particular policy so that it's not, you know, overlapping. So when they change one policy, they don't have to change another. That was the, I guess, the significant piece there. All of these others were pretty small, uh, policies. Putting in something on remote, remote learning policy was important to us. Um, we, we know how important it is right now, um, to have a cooperation, um, within our entire district when it comes to remote learning. We also know how important it is for everybody to play their role, right? And, um, so we've really in, in this, um, are, have expectations for everyone, uh, who's in our school community. When we have to, um, incorporate remote learning, whether or not it's someone who's completely virtual. Or if we have to, you know, move remote as a building or as a district, we need everyone to play their roles. And then teachers teach and students learn, and parents can certainly be there to help get kids set up and, and we appreciate that. But we need to allow the teachers to be the teacher.
And if you remember, um, I, a couple of meetings ago, we, we had directed the superintendent to look into a more of a defined policy, um, with parent engagement piece. Dan, was there anything put in there about repercussions for that, for that policy with parents, if it's, you know, constant or excessive interference?
What it does, it defines what, as a policy normally would. It, it defines what it is that the parents can and cannot do. Um, and, and so from there, um, you know, we would never want to define one particular set of consequences. But the reality is this, if we do end up with a situation where, um, we, we have to remove a, a parent from participating or being part of remote learning, we would certainly do that.
Okay. Very good. All right, um, I could call for, okay, this is, this is coming from my standing committee, so, um. We will vote on, uh, the following, uh, polits, for issuing the following, uh, policies. 5570, the fiscal accountability policy, 5572, the audit committee policy. Uh, 5676, the privacy and security for student data and teacher and principal data. Uh, policy 6550, the lease of absence policy, and 7155 for remote learning. Um, all those in favor of accepting those, first reading of those policies, please say aye.
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 Motion standing, motion carries. Um, all right, uh, we have this, uh, informational item there for, uh, the, a fundraiser, virtual readathon from the airport parent group. Uh, date is to be determined. All right, Marissa, ex-official student members report.
Um, I guess the first thing I'll talk about is like, in the high school, I feel like there's like this weird like atmosphere. I feel like everyone's kind of just like waiting for it to happen, like waiting for us to shut down and close. And I guess, I mean, I know like other schools are already starting like on Monday, the schools in like the orange zones or however they call it. They're starting to shut down and I guess depending on who you talk to, like, some people want to go full virtual. But a bunch of people like the hybrids. So I know like there's no control over what happens. I mean, we live in 2020 right now, so that's kind of going on. But, um, it's kind of just weird. Everyone's kind of quiet and whispering about it. Um, so yeah, but on like a more positive note, I guess, um, adoptive family is going on in the school, which is, um, pretty big deal. Um, we've been doing like the 12 days of giving that started on two, Monday, Tuesday, when Tuesday, if you were in school on Monday. And, um, collecting food and stuff for that. And then today was like the last day to put in, um, money for the trees to decorate. So what's going to happen is like, if you're in the building, you can, um, decorate it with your club and your teacher's room. And then if you're not, you'll be able to pick it up and just decorate it on your own. We can't like stay after and do the decorating day anymore. But, um, if the thing that'll be interesting is if we do go fully virtual, how to like keep going. Cause there's no way we're going to like just drop adaptive family. We're going to keep going. So there'll be a way to like collect food and keep, keep it going even with everything going on. So those are two things. I don't really have much else to say, but yeah.
Oh, you're not going to talk about Saturday?
Yeah, I will. So, um, the soccer team got their first sectional win. Since the last time I think we had a board meeting, we won NFL, which would be Grand Island for like the first time in my high school career. And then, um, we won sectionals on Saturday, which is pretty awesome, pretty cool. Um, yeah.
Congratulations.
She hasn't stopped smiling since.
Thank you.
Excellent, very good. All right, presence report. Um, just as a superintendent, I've been obviously in constant communication every day with the way, the way COVID's treating the, the area and with closings, um, you know, we're trying, uh, as we showed at the school district, trying to keep as many students in school as possible. Uh, and that is obviously our ultimate goal with things. And I know the superintendent will touch on that with his report coming up. Um, a few of the other things, uh, we're just obviously discussing is that, you know, going forward. Um, I believe that we're going to, uh, be virtual for the next, at least the next month, uh, for our meetings. And, uh, that will, then we'll reevaluate January, um, just because the, with the way, with us being that designated, possibly in the yellow zone. Uh, we, we do not want to take risks of having anyone that, um, any meeting that where we, you know, can be virtual, we are, we're going to be. Uh, so, uh, that's just so the public knows that that's, that's the reasoning for it behind that. Um, what more to the, the superintendent for his report?
Thank you. Uh, first, let me say this, uh, you know, we, we touched on the remote learning with, with the new policy. But I need to say, our school community has been incredible during all of this. The flexibility, patience, understanding, um, who, it's, it's, it's really been, um, quite miraculous. I, I really mean that. So thank you to all of the families who have, who have done such great work. If their kids are part of the virtual program, so many of them have ended to do extra things to make it work for, for their kids at home. And, uh, they've, for the most part, we've been very, very fortunate with the, the kind of cooperation, collaboration we've had. So I, I just want to say thank you. I did want to mention the, where the donation that was, that was approved, um, for Colonial Village. It was a very nice donation. It was for additional technology. Couldn't come at a better time right now for this, for the school. For, for our, you know, for our district, for our kids. So very, very kind. And then I wanted to say thank you. So, um, I know that you already accepted that. Next, I want to talk a little about the yellow zone. Um, you saw the video that we put out on what a yellow zone is. Um, here's really what it comes down to. If our district is designated a yellow zone. We will have to, within two weeks, have 20% of our in-person population tested. And as long as those tests come back at a lower positivity rate than the rate that put us in the yellow to begin with. We can continue to have people in person, okay? Um, you know, there, there's been a question certainly in the area about the number of tests and if they're available. Not yesterday, but the Tuesday before that, it was my understanding that there were only about 2,000 in our county. Now it's my understanding that there's 8,000 in our county. Um, that number would allow our county schools, if the whole county was in the yellow, to at least go through one set of tests. Testing the 20%. So, um, I'm somewhat optimistic that at least we'd be able to go through another two weeks, okay? Um, the reality is, I think, our county and probably many others need more tests. If this is going to be something that we're going to have to continue to test. So we, we, we need those tests. We have, um, um, gotten approval from our school physician to, uh, put, put in the application for the license. Uh, Mr. Stack, was that sent out tonight?
The check is being processed tomorrow. It's going to go out first thing in the morning. Yep.
So we are applying for a license so that we can actually do our own testing on the premises. Um, we will be putting something out to families, um, we're going to, through a Google, um, form. We're going to be asking them to consent to the testing. I want you to understand this, this is only for the people who are coming in person. So whether it's the hybrid or the, the in-person program, so it's only our regular program, uh, families who need to, um, answer this, this Google form. If we don't have 20% of our population tasked, then we have to close up shop and we have to go remote. Okay, so, um, there'll be more information on what that is, what the test looks like. There's a little video on, on what it looks like. Unfortunately, our county will not perform the test for us. And I think, you know, I've said that they just can't, they don't have the resources to do it. The testing sites now are running in some cases five, six days it's taken to get results back. Um, whereas in just about a month ago, it was a, we stood before you, Mr. Stack and I did, and talked about two days, the turnaround time. Um, because of the number of cases, the turnaround time for those, those results is certainly slowed. Any questions from the board on the yellow zone and the possible designation there before I move on? Okay. Um, athletics, I was going to congratulate Marissa and the soccer team. We, we all, we did that together. Congratulations. Certainly a great win. I would have loved to have seen you go up against section five. Um, I thought you certainly had a team that was strong enough, um, and skilled enough to, to really compete there. So that would have been fun to see, but congratulations on, on being section champ.
Thank you so much.
Just today, there was a change in winter sports, okay? The, um, winter sports that are considered to be low risk are now moved back to December 13th. Does that sound right? It's mid-December. Okay, it was supposed.
14th.
14th.
14th, yeah. And I, high risk to January 4th.
For January 4th. So, um, that's where we're at now. Obviously, you know. COVID is playing a role in all of our athletics, just like it is many things. So we'll, we'll wait on that. Any new information that we do get, we'll certainly share. Transportation, I'll continue to ask people to transport if they can transport. Um, one of the, probably my biggest concern right now for closing isn't necessarily a yellow designation. It's staffing because of people who test positive or people who test positive. And then the, the number of people who are quarantined as a result, okay? And, um, so we're, we're very concerned about that. So in one of the areas of staffing, when it comes to bus driving. If families can drive, we're going to ask them to continue to do that. It certainly helps us out. It allows us to continue to make this work and stay open. Uh, and lastly, I know this is a reminder each meeting now, but food service. Food is there, it's available, you can come by and pick it up. Um, if you're virtual, you can come by and pick it up. On the days that would be your hybrid day to be home, you can come pick up food. Just get in touch with our food service department and they will make sure that there's enough food there available. If you haven't been coming, give us a heads up that you're coming, but you can drive through and pick it up. We did, um, provide food on our first asynchronous day, but we will do that for all of our asynchronous days. We actually provided transportation on that first asynchronous day and, um, transported about 200 meals to families on that asynchronous day. Um, so that was a really, that was, I think, a really good thing. Normally, we have about 100 people coming for food. On that day, we were at, I want to say about 325, I think, is the number that, uh, Dominic gave us. So, but that was a good thing. Any questions for me?
Uh, Dan, one of the things, a couple of people in the community, they liked the, they put out that video last week. Uh, just in, you know, a couple of minutes, just real, real informative for them. They were asking if you'd be able to do like a, like a couple of video every week, especially with these changes that go on. So that, you know, for them, it's a little bit faster than having to go through and read all this and everything, just to hear, you know, and, and see that.
Yeah, I think anytime we have something new come up now that, that needs some explanation, we'll certainly do that. And that, I think that was a, a great example that, you, you know, the yellow designation piece, that it was pretty complex if you tried to read through it. So, um, glad to hear that that did help. Um, I think we've done a couple of those recently. So, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good way to get information out in a little quicker way if something needs explanation.
Yeah, it might be good for this with our new designation, if, you know, depending on what Dan Stapleton comes down and says about that whole yellow designation, they have another one for that. Yeah, it might be good for this with our new designation if, you know, depending on what Dan Stapleton comes down and says about that whole yellow designation, they have another one for that. So. Uh, any other questions, the superintendent for the, for the board? Um, I have one. Do, do you know, where are we now in getting our, uh, you know, social media and website and all the stuff changed over? How, how is that process coming along?
Good question. Um, just, we just looked today at the, probably the one, um, that we're going to select from app to G for the, for the website and what that's going to look like. We really focused on, um, what it looks like on our phone, right? We wanted to make sure that it was very user-friendly that way because so many people, um, if they're going to our website. Jump on the phone. So we wanted to make sure it's very user-friendly there. So now it'll be the building of the, um. Uh, other parts of the website that will, will now be part of our district, like, um. A, a Facebook, a page and a, uh, Insta, what do you call that? Instacart? Insta, correct. Sorry, Twitter, one of them, I'm kidding. Um, but we will have a, we will have a Twitter, we will have a Twitter account. And, um, so that'll be a way for us to get some information out quicker. The, the, the real. The, the thing that we're looking for with, with, with Twitter. Um, is the opportunity for our staff in the school community to play a role on updating the, 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 the great things that are going on in our district all the time. So, um, that's probably the, the most important part of this new launch, once it's in place. So. Um, we're, we're, we're just starting to build it, but, um, I would imagine that. By the end of the first semester, we, we should have this thing up and running.
Okay. All right, very good. All right, uh, reports to the board. Um, obviously, nothing listed there. Uh, any items for board discussion right now? All right, uh, I do have one piece to actually the new business, old business type thing together. Um, and I know it's in our capital project, but Dan, the, there's a couple of potholes in the entrance of the high school that are, are getting the. Getting broken down a little bit we might need to fill. Um, just know it's for people pulling in there that they've, they've hit them and.
Good, good to know. Yeah, Allison, if you could just, uh, let Greg know, um, we cannot wait. It can't come soon enough. Um, this spring, summer, um, all of our high school, middle school lot will be done. So, um, but thanks, absolutely.
I will let Greg know.
Okay, all right. Uh, anything else for older new business for the board?
Okay.
All right, then, um. Board member comments. I do want to congratulate Marissa on the, on the win with her whole team. Uh, I, I've been in, I've coached in that game before, uh, back-to-back years. I know what the kind of excitement is and. Uh, you know, I, though, I sat here at home in a nice warm weather, a nice warm house, watching it. Uh, it's. You know, after, after coaching for twenty-some-odd years, I tried to get out into cold weather games. It's not the easiest to do because when that was one of the reasons why you were no longer coaching. Uh, but I, I, I mean, I, I want to also say to our athletic department that, that, that streaming was great. I mean, there, you know. Constantly about a hundred people on it at all times, watching the game. Um, you know, they're obviously very, uh. Very sad in the sense of not having a whole crowd. I mean, I think if, if we definitely. Well, it would have been a neutral site in a normal year, but if we were hosting that, uh, you know, and I normally, we would have packed that entire stands and, you know, it would have been a definite, different atmosphere. But, um, congratulations to the girls and, and on their phenomenal season. Um, and I. You know, uh, hopefully they can repeat next year. So.
Yeah, thank you so much. It was a great season and. Really fun, given everything that happened. It was just nice to have a season too.
It was nice to not have to play in mud at home, wasn't it? You know, no mud, no, no wet, you know, grass and muddy. It's, it's really nice to play on that turf at your home field.
Yes. Oh, I love the field. It is beautiful.
Very good.
Steve, I also like to congratulate Marissa and entire soccer team for their big win. Representing our school district. And, uh, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and, and be safe.
Yeah, don't be turkeys.
Yeah.
Uh, so there's another?
Yep.
There's no other, is there Bobby or something?
Yeah, one, one other thing. Um, Marissa, you mentioned about the days of giving, about getting food and picking up stuff. Please reach out if you need assistance. I'm, I'm available during the day or other hours. So I'm offer myself if, if the committee or Mr. Pogel or anybody needs assistance.
Yeah, thank you so much. I was like collecting food the other day and I didn't notice like. There wasn't as many like donations as you normally have, which I mean, it's to expect, like there's no really consistency this year. So. It is kind of different, but yeah, thank you so much.
Okay.
All right, if there's nothing else then for the good, the order, I have to call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion standing, we're adjourned.